Under your announcements, we're good? Zoning Administrator?
I had no formal report.
No formal report from the zoning administrator, okay. Can you give us a little heads up of what he's been working on if you don't mind?
We're in the DRB meeting for Thursday the 7th. And that is for the permanent weight issue as well as David London. I guess the discussion with Jonas and Arrow, that's the route we should take. So we're gonna double up. We had to do it early because her recommendation is we start with the site and then same as we did last time.
Okay.
It's gonna be before Thursday, we're gonna do a site visit.
Okay.
Gary and Brian are gonna have to scramble. So I don't know what's going on.
How does the information get out? Because I have to send it to him. I don't know, does Brian have?
To Brian?
I had to send it to Gary because he didn't get it.
I think, I don't know that it's gone out yet.
I got an email from Deb today.
Oh, okay, so it has gone out.
So I guess...
Gary can get it and Brian should too.
Apparently Gary's email isn't on, I forwarded it.
All right, I'll follow up.
Just follow up to make sure that Brian knows.
Maybe Kevin doesn't have any email or...
So, okay.
I didn't send it, he did, so...
Okay. And that's everything else he seems to be adjusting.
I guess.
Those are the only two things.
Those are the only two hard issues, I guess.
I did get word that we did, we were finally able to serve papers to Daniel Bagnier. While he was at an appearance in New York State, so... That worked out, so... Now we'll go from there. The clock is, clock is still ticking, everything, everything is forward progress. The time, we have the timeframe and, and everything will go from the time. So, it's all... So, we're, we're still moving forward and, so... And that's all I have for an update on that. Planning Commissioner?
I have something from Harry. So, a couple of things he wanted mentioned was, first, he spoke with John Freed, who's the town's computer tech consultant, who let him know that the laptop computer that is being purchased for the zoning administrator should be purchased directly from Dell with Windows 10 Pro installed and no Microsoft Office software, as the town owns Microsoft Office software with additional licenses available. So John will take care of that installation as soon as the new computer is delivered. Harry would also like to hold the third session of the Community Values Mapping Program on the second floor of the Town Hall on Thursday, November 14th. Deb suggested he talk with the Select Board and myself to make sure there is no conflict in schedule and that the Select Board approves this event. As far as I can see from the calendar, it looks fine.
You're all good with that, right? You good, John?
The third session of the Community Values Mapping Program. He didn't indicate a time, so I'll clarify that with him and add it to the, to the calendar.
Frank?
In the past two mapping sessions, there hasn't been anybody from agriculture or forestry to highlight their interests.
Thank you.
And then finally Tammy Brass has accepted the position of Clerk/Secretary of the Planning Commission at the rate offered, and she will start at the next PPC meeting on Monday, October 28th. And he mentioned that he had discussed the hourly rate with Julie before making the offer to Tammy.
Excellent.
And that's all from Harry.
Good. Road Foreman's report?
We'll finish up with Eric Rowe this week. We've got major work to do and there you go. I'm gonna invite Charlie and Eric to talk here with Charlie Oakham.
Okay.
Talk about some sand. They've got some sand over there that may work for us and we can add the stone product to it. I think it's probably more beneficial than doing just the stone product.
Okay.
So, I just, they came tonight for this. I didn't know they were coming, but I'm gonna, while I'm on, I think they should talk.
All right. We'll pass it over to them. Charlie?
Hi there.
Hi.
I just, you know, would love to partner with you guys to, to furnish your sand. We've got a lot in the stockpile. It's nice and clean. We only use the best paper and gravel that we can find to run the sand through.
Okay. What kind of numbers are we looking at?
You're looking at $6 a yard loaded in your trucks in the pit.
Okay.
And we've got a price list here. I can give you a tool for, you know, all the products that we have. We've got stone, you know, occasionally you have to remove it or...
Okay.
We've got screened topsoil, screened gravel, besides the winter sand.
Okay.
Lots of product.
We've got probably enough sand in that part now.
Okay.
We just want to add the stone product, which we talked about.
Okay.
I think we should have some sand to go with the stone product. And this, and this is, I mean, this is what we would get.
Okay.
Wallingford, same sort of used in the past. But some of that sand to color it up. This is actually some sand that pulled out of his product today. It's reasonably gritty and, you know, I don't know that it's gonna fall really well, but, you know, mixed with, by adding stone to it, we'll, we'll do all right. So, I mean, I would like to discuss about 1,000 yards from somewhere to put on this side and then we would get maybe that much more between two sides and stone product to go with that, so...
The stone product, would you get the stone product from Wallingford or, or each side get it from the closer?
Either, either or, yes. I mean, it's, they both have the same thing and it's reasonable money. The only thing I'm waiting on is whether I can murder a price like we did on the crusher run.
Okay.
Now, because they really, I mean, they came down $2.50 a ton and that, but I haven't heard that from them on, on...
Okay. Okay. What does that turn into, $6 a yard turn into how much per ton?
Do you know what yours weighs, Charlie?
Uh, the yardage of a yard usually weighs 2,700 pounds.
2,700 pounds, okay.
Yeah. That's the conclusion between the two.
Okay.
So, you're buying stone by the ton and you're paying by the yard.
Right, that's why I'm trying to...
So, up towards $9 a ton, that's a lot per yard.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Let's get the rest of the numbers and then we'll come back. But that looks, that looks right there like our best option for a sand product right now.
The price is right, for sure. I mean, reasonable product.
Yeah.
Would you mix it in the pile or would you try to dump left and dump right and have a choice, have an option as you...
Probably put the sand in the pile and draw stone as needed. You know, we may not put all of the stone there at one time. Just get a good pile that we can work out of. But blend it and load it. You know, uh...
There, if you want.
Different applications, we're gonna use a different mix, if you know what I mean. Now, just...
If you want, we could actually blend it in the bed as we load the sand too. If you wanted to dump stone there, we could just add, you know, as we load it into the trucks. Mix it, and then as you dump off, it'll mix even more.
It's a little, little advantage. We can blend it into a grizzly pretty easily. We wouldn't, we'd have to truck it right by the town garage to get to the pit, so...
So you could, you can blend it accordingly as...
The advantage is he has a pile big enough over there so we can go over there with two or three trucks and slam it right to the pit.
Get it, get it done out.
Because we're getting late enough where we've got to draw a line in the sand and move on, you know?
Move on, right.
Finishing up summer work and trying to do our fall work and trying to get ready for winter and all, you know? You know, all in crunch time here.
And we're already almost the end of October.
Right, so...
Go either way quick. Okay. So then we should have all the numbers by the next meeting that we can lay this all out and you'll, we'll have a comparison per tons for everything and stuff like that. The stone products that you have, Charlie, are they crushed stones or they...
It's just, uh, screen.
It's green stone, okay.
Yeah, the smallest, we got an inch and a half, might as well. It goes all the way down to nothing, inch and a half.
Right, okay. Okay. Looks like a...
And there's some tailings he has over there. At times we may have application, you know? But I think immediately we'll be...
The sand product is what we're looking at right now, so... Let us just get, and we'll evaluate all the numbers and stuff like that. But I would, I mean, it seems like it's gonna be our best option, but if we don't evaluate all the numbers and stuff like that, we'll...
And I'll, I'll leave the price listed.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Well, thank you for coming down to the meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Good. That's a good, close.
Yeah.
Right, it's gonna work out, work out well. All right. That's Chuck said, when Chuck said that he was not gonna make it tonight, he was curious if we have any numbers, if we're close to our budget numbers on how much we wanted to spend on the purchased material for row topping.
You're getting there, yes.
Okay. But you...
We, we're approaching 4,000 tons of volusia.
Okay.
And so that's 1,000, it was basically SLC. We've got a day or two left to haul.
Okay.
We'll be done.
Okay.
And now we may find some thin spots when we grade in the spring. We've got a drop dress and, but, you know, um... The volusia product, um... It's awesome stuff, but I don't care for the runway ride. It doesn't wait, doesn't wait, well, you've gotta be quick from there. I talked to Gary about it. He said, "Oh, it doesn't bother me a bit because I, you know, it won't give up."
Right.
But it's probably a little too coarse to use on a, you know? We may end up putting something on top of that and blending some more stones into it or something.
They have, they have a mix they call shoulder, shoulder mix, which is a finer, which is a finer mix than a rubble mix. And that may be something that we want to go at for top.
In the future, we'll...
The shoulder mix has, I don't know if that's much, I don't think that's half inch maybe max. We use it to patch the holes in the parking lot. But it, it, it does a suitable job. It's better than the rubble mix for the, the crusher run, for the, for those smaller stones.
Stones are just a little large one way, so they separate through the bit system on the grader. When you're grading, you know, they're supposed to pass through between the bits and some of them hang and then they're just, you're actually sorting the stone out and you can't feather anything back in. They'll crunch up and break up over time.
Right.
It's, it's, they're gonna be runway for a while.
Keeps everybody going slow?
Well, that's, that's a good thing. Put it up through by Larry Leslie's and see how low they're seeing to the...
Yeah, that would not be as favorable, but it's, I, it's a very nice product. Now, with, with all these rains that have come, you don't, you don't see any, any change in the top, so... That's very nice about it. All the equipment?
I haven't been able to catch up with Katrina yet.
Okay.
We tried last week and then this week she's sick, I guess, so she didn't... One of your Tuesdays, we're good days, so...
Okay.
But I've got a plan for what we're gonna do and then I'll recommend to her some things that maybe she can do that herself a little bit.
Okay, excellent. One thing I noticed up there by Dorothy Brace is the drain on the other side of the road seems low to me. That, that manhole seems a little bit low. It seems like it's catching a lot of leaves where that kid lives that drives truck. Is that...
We could put a riser on it, but I mean, I kinda left it in there.
You kinda wanted it?
Wanted it to be positive, to take water.
Right. Right, as I go by and look, it looks almost like it's low enough so it acts as a catch base in two, so that's kinda counterproductive if it fills with leaves.
Yeah, well, we have to keep them hooked up.
Yeah. I, I was just curious...
In the one street, uh, sometimes it, you know, just really don't work.
Okay. That guy did talk to you about parking the trailer in the town garage or...
He did, he did. And I, I guess I just told him that long as he was out of our way, I didn't have a problem with it because I kinda felt that we're accommodating Jill Clark over here and it was, you know, it was not fair to turn somebody else away. And he's been, has bothered us a bit.
Right. I, I would think that that seems reasonable for him to be able to park there. I mean, it's not in our ways.
He's not there a lot, he hasn't, doesn't bother us.
It's not in our way and he certainly doesn't have room at his house. He tucks that truck in there, I don't know how he does that, but, good. Good for him.
Supreme Donuts? Supreme Donuts?
No, I haven't. I only spoke with him on the phone. I don't, I wouldn't know him by mail.
Yeah. I don't see him around much, but he's, the trucks in and out a couple of times a week. Seems, it's nice to see that house occupied again, the way I see it, so... Any other questions for Keith? The equipment, everything is pretty well set?
Yep. We're working on one truck a dollar a week. I did, cats are coming back for the other ones, so we want a fresh tire going into there and...
All the maintenance that we've needed done to all the trucks, all the brake cams and stuff that?
Definitely, actually did the suspension on the 13 Mack, that was last meeting I had. Yeah, we've done some things, so... There, yeah, everything is feasible.
It's ready to go. How long, how long before you figure out putting a truck? It could be ready if the weather goes south on us quick.
Water maintenance officially starts November 1st.
Okay.
It's done usually, usually by the middle of November. We've set off at least to where we can short notice get something ready.
Get, get one truck ready to go, okay.
So, we still have cloud rings on some of the trucks and we'll, you know, it's a matter of taking the plates out, using the sand. We've got a couple of things to do. We've got one cylinder leaking on Perry's truck. And we've got a gearbox seal issue on Dale's truck, which I may have to, I may run that right to Mike and have them redo it and then bring it back and put it in and then, so...
It's probably quicker and more, more effective use of time.
Right, so... So, all over the next few weeks, that'll all be happening. If it snowed tomorrow, we could, unless it's a major northeast.
Right.
Usually by the middle of November, we're ready to go.
Okay. Vacations, anybody got vacations? You got one coming up in...
First week of December.
First week of December? Is anybody out?
After Thanksgiving. Dale will probably take some time on his leave, he does. Depends about his, whatever he has left on vacation. Barry hasn't said anything, so I don't know where I'm making there.
Okay. Any other questions, John or you? Nothing from you? Bob? Okay, thank you, Keith. Assessors?
No.
Nothing from them at the end, so... Town Treasurers Memo? Oh, Town Clerks Memo, I'm sorry. Trying to jump. Email from Vermont regarding the monument. I didn't get a chance to read that today.
So, in essence, it is a very supportive email from Laura Treishman from the Division for Historic Preservation, giving a little bit more details on, on the monument and also was supportive of us relocating it or the town doing what they wish with it.
Okay.
That's long story short.
And that will be, that letter will be added in with the...
Yeah, so it's to, we have all that listed under Old Business to continue to be discussed.
Okay.
So...
All right. No assessors. Town Clerk will be closed on Thursday? That was easy. That was relatively easy.
I think we're gonna talk about it under Old Business a little bit later because there have just been a...
Because there are several.
...about it, so...
We've got the updated letter that I sent to you.
I saw it.
Okay.
But I, I believe it's out there somewhere.
Yeah, I should.
And I spoke to Laura Treishman, so she, you know, they're walking back on that.
Oh, okay. I saw your message, yes, I did. But I was just, Deb included this, so I was just reporting on what Deb included in her memo.
Oh.
Yeah. So that's why I figured we would talk more about it under Old Business because it's continued to develop, so, and there's more to, more to discuss.
Okay, excellent. Treasurers Memo, warrants to be signed. Anybody look at the warrant check? Did you look at it, John?
I haven't done anything.
All the tax signers are off. Oh my God, Julie, what are we gonna do?
You're gonna have to get a pen.
Dirty Sabbath. Okay. Yeah, Bob, you can start signing checks. You never get the same checks. Thank you. Strictly coincidental, Julie, that Jonas and Adele had the same exact amount? Like this?
Yep. I saw that too and I was like, oh, what'd I do when I just... Yep, just coincidence.
Is there a sheet of the new policies?
I have, I only put on the table one copy. I thought that when we, I actually wanted to put that at the end of my report, if you could, and then I'll read them aloud so that you guys don't have to.
I'll get some of that.
It's a lot of work.
Sure.
Did you check the warrants yet or not? You can move on if you keep signing.
Seen all of these, haven't I?
But you've seen most of them, right? Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the warrants.
You good then?
Not a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Gary? Okay, 37 checks to be signed, 13 payroll, 24 counts payable. Waste water payments are starting to come in, as you can see from the attached envelope. Content, some people are upset. Now, he did pay. He paid his bill, but he just doesn't like me very much. Okay. So... Oh, I timed it off on you guys, huh? Okay. Well, we won't get into reading this, but he's, he feels that, um... That was overreaching just because I signed that and single-handedly ruined this community. I'll just take the high points off. But he's basically very disappointed with the...
It was addressed to him.
The raise in the, in the fewer, in the water user bill, sewer fees.
Was it addressed to him?
Uh, he just...
Tom, look, it's Tom, look.
Oh, yeah, the extortionist treasurer. So...
I don't think it's important that we go through the entire, uh, list. I just, if, if we could maybe... I guess I would like to address a couple of things. One is that this is not, it's not a budget. There is not a townwide vote. The wastewater facility is slightly different than a municipality. It is a part of what we do, but it is an entity that operates on a different accounting system. Basically, it doesn't, it's not a for-profit, obviously, but it also is, the users are supposed to pay for the entire system. That's how it's supposed to work.
Mm-hmm.
So, we made a decision based on that fact, that, that we had increased operating costs. To his point that there are multiple people, we hired a company and there are probably gonna be different people coming and going. And I know that the one woman who works there regularly is in training to get her certification.
Right.
So she is very often accompanied by an upper level person, as is necessary.
Right.
So I would like to address that point. And I guess those are the most important points to address in that. I just want, I want people in our community to understand that we are not here to make money off of this. We can't by law, but we also should not be supplementing it through the general fund.
The general fund does implement a small percentage of the upgrade.
Yes, yes.
So the whole town is paying for a small percent of the upgrade. It was a very, very good situation that we had and unfortunately, that situation is no longer available.
Right.
Jeff, just because he lives so close, he, he treated us extremely well and, and we just can't, we can't find that situation again. And it has to support itself. And without a sewer system in the town, there, there could be no houses in that town. There could be no livable houses in that town because there's, there's no way to have sewer systems in that whole village center. We researched and tried to find our best options.
I believe we had a letter from the state telling you that the current budget was unsustainable.
Yeah, we did.
Exactly that too. We had a letter from the state. We were trying everything we could, but...
And we still are. We're work, we are working with a, an organization to help us better manage our funds and make sure that we have an, an emergency fund for any necessary repairs to this and, and they're helping us to make sure that we have a handle on that. And I think we're all...
Maintaining it, right. Well, thank you, Julie. Frank?
You had mentioned, but it's not allowed currently, that it would be possible to run the plant only on weekdays and shut it down on weekends and it wouldn't bother...
No, it's not. It, that was, that was one opinion, but due to the permit, the way the permit's written, it's, it's not an option. It's not an option.
Could the legislature, May Robin, put together special consideration?
I don't think... I don't think they can step in on that. That turns into environmental and A and R and all that stuff and...
Well, the legislature runs those guys.
Yeah, well... The amount... The potential savings aren't worth the... Aren't worth it. We have... I mean, that was... It was still almost $2,000 cheaper than our... Or $1,500 cheaper than our other option for maintenance. And we have to have a maintenance... We have to have somebody that can provide 24/7 service for any available incident that may occur at the plant. So by doing so, you have to, uh... And actually, it's probably if you calculated the hours out, it's a lot cheaper to have them come and do it than it would be to have a guy come and clean your furnace. I think from the number of the hours that they spend, we're not even paying that much as you would have a basic... Even a plumber or electrician come to your house and do a service call.
Is... Is that a good reason why the costs went up?
A good reason why the cost went up is Jeff was doing it way below farm... Fair market value because he lived in town. That's... That's the only reason the cost went up. And everybody that's worked there said this, you know, it...
And he was self-employed.
Right. It wasn't a sustainable, uh, rate for any... Anyone. The guy that took over that was Jeff's cover. His... His supply man said, unfortunately, you were getting such a great rate, you didn't... You didn't even realize what a great rate he was giving you because he lived in town and stuff. But he was able to do that. We were fortunate for so many years that... That we were able to, uh, enjoy that great rate. And now we're... And we're still, as far as the state, we're still pretty good on the lower end of the scale for a lot of septic systems. From what I understand from different conversations. I mean, a lot of places are $1,000 a year. I have talked to a few other people that asked me why the rate went up and when I explained to them that... They understood, you know? It's not... It's not the greatest thing in the world, but it's... It was the best option that we could come up with. It's not like there's fifty different companies out there that'll come in and take over the operation of your plant.
The only undeniable fact is that you could operate it at the same expense with many more hookups. And there's no hookups to add on to. So if you added a hundred hookups, it obviously would lower that rate per hookup. But with no place to... No place for expansion, you're locked into that number of hookups. And that's... That's part of the nuts and bolts of that operation over there is that's just a fact you've got facing. There's no... No room for expansion between hookups.
I want to... And the planning commission was looking at, in the north of that, of the sewer district, you have Land Trust property. And south of it, you have Land Trust property. You don't have... So you're not going to have any development going in. You're not going to have additional unless in the village you have... Allow for more multi-humanitarian flexibility. Then you might pick up a few here and there probably is what you would end up doing, but it's better than nothing. If it's allowable and it would be something that would be a conditional use type thing so that DRP would be able to fit the neighborhood. And all those other things that would allow some flexibility with an increase of the usage.
Thank you. Please attached, new policies. You're gonna... We're gonna talk about that?
At the end.
At the end of your story? Grants and aid, Harrock Brook Road for the culverts. And now there's, uh... Some additional documentation was...
So we... We got a grant for $11,100 that was for this year's work on Harrock Brook Road. And then the two outstanding FEMA grants that were from, what, eighteen? Eight, from eighteen, um, that we submitted paperwork for in June. Some of that document... Some of that, um, they required some additional documents and they were sent this week. So those are still outstanding.
Okay. And then... Then we'll be cleaned up on everything we got going on. And I see that we got a new realm come up. You got some ideas or something that we can work into?
It's November 22nd, so it'll...
But you have some... You have some places that...
I'm assuming the south of the area. Part we left because it's a...
Right. That's... That's a perfect candidate for that option. Well, that'll be great because then we'll be able to do that on somebody else's bill. Excellent. Okay. The driveways are all good on Harrock Road, right?
I believe they are, yes.
Okay, good. And the assessor office is gonna need a new printer. That's not really a big deal?
No.
Okay. Couple hundred bucks. And did we order the computer for Jonah Schatt?
I have not ordered it.
Okay. It's... Who's ordering that? Is he ordering? Deb ordering it? You order it? Do you know or...
I don't...
Okay.
I wrote myself a note to do it tomorrow. I mean, it's not a part of my official duties, but I have their contact information and I will gladly order them.
Thank you. Frank?
The printer would... The computer would be on network, so it would probably be able to share at a public printer's level. I don't know if it's... Don't even necessarily confuse it. It would have much easier.
It's not that... No. That's the assessors. The assessors need it. So... Okay. And that leaves us still a little bit of money left. Excellent. Thank you. All right, let's go with your policies, please.
Okay. So to start, there's one policy that, um, is actually... According to Judy was a policy that the select board had established a while ago, but I can't find the black and white copy of the policy. So I would like for that to be done. This one is a policy that would be adopted by the treasurer's office and the select board. And it is regarding small credits and small amounts due. So the purpose of this policy is to reduce costs associated with tracking, refunding, and collecting miniscule credits and amounts due caused by taxpayer errors during collection of tax payments. Small credits, the town of Pollet will establish a policy to eliminate credits under $5 after tax collection is complete each February. Small amounts due, the town of Pollet will establish a policy to abate small amounts due under $5 after tax collection is complete each February. This policy is hereby adopted by the treasurer and select board of the town of Pollet on October 22nd, 2019. This policy is effective as of this date until amended or repealed. So this is a policy that we've been operating on, but I would just like to have it in black and white.
So can I intentionally send a check in for my taxes 499 short?
There are so often errors, like $2 or something and I mean...
Well, I'm saying, if we're just stating that we're gonna forget about anything under $5 short, constantly it'll just pay less.
Well, it's effective...
I wouldn't want it... I wouldn't want it to be somebody to do it intentionally to... To save money.
Pretty sure that it's not many cheaper than you, Bob, so I don't think we gotta worry about it.
Not since my father left town.
Okay. So is anybody interested in making this a motion? It seems like a very... A very easy way to not have to go through a whole bunch of steps. Cut a check for 75 cents or something ridiculous like that. I think that's a great idea. What do you think, John?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. You want me to second in or are you okay?
No.
All right. I'll in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
So then the following four policies are new policies that I am establishing in my office. Since the treasurer, although I am appointed for the duration of Judy's term, but since the treasurer's office is an elected office, the policies created by the office are the policies of the office itself. I don't need select board approval on these policies. I'm just asking for an endorsement because I think that these are sound policies and I think that you guys should... Should be fine beyond them. And then I will... I will read them... I'll just read them all back to back and then it can be one blanket motion for you to be authorized to sign it as a chair. Okay? The town of Pollet, accounting, auditing, and financial reporting policy. The purpose of the accounting policy is to establish and maintain high standards for accounting practices in the town of Pollet. It's enabling the select board and treasurer to make sound decisions in preparing budgets and maintaining finances. The accounting practices of the town of Pollet will conform to generally accepted accounting principles for local governments as established by the governmental account standards board. The treasurer will establish and maintain a system of fund accounting and shall measure financial position and results of operation for governmental funds and accrual basis of accounting for proprietary and fiduciary funds. Auditing. An annual audit of town financial statements by a qualified, properly licensed, independent accounting firm will be conducted and the results will be reported to the select board in a timely manner and a summary will be included in the town report. Quarterly financial reporting. The treasurer shall prepare no less than once per quarter financial reports for review by the select board. These reports will consist of budget status reports showing revenues collected and appropriations expended along with variance from the budgeted amounts for each line item. Statements of review and... Of revenue and expenditures. Balance sheet showing town assets, less liabilities, and the fund balance. Additionally, the treasurer shall produce annual reports regarding the financial position of the town to be both reported to the select board and to accompany the summary auditor's report in the town report. The treasurer shall also make him or herself available to answer any questions the select board may have about the contents of the reports, provided the board makes the request within no less than 48 hours prior. This policy is hereby adopted by the treasurer of the town of Pollet, Vermont on October 22nd, 2019, with the endorsement of the select board of the town of Pollet. This policy is effective as of this date until amended or repealed. The second one. Town of Pollet records, maintenance, and distribution policy. I'm sorry, everyone. To establish a clear understanding of responsibilities to maintain confidential information and to be clear and open regarding public records. Authority. The treasurer slash tax collector shall maintain copies of tax bills and payment histories of such. Tax bills and records of delinquency are public records and as such, any members of the public has the right to request this information. Section 532 VSA subsection 3102-J and K are added to read. J, tax bills prepared by a municipality under subdivision 5402B, one of this title showing only the amount of total tax due shall not be considered confidential return information under this section. The purposes of calculating adjustments under section... Under chapter 154 of this title, information provided by the commissioner to a municipality under subsection 6066A, A, of this title and information provided by the municipality to a taxpayer under subsection 6066AF shall be considered confidential return information under this section. K, notwithstanding subsection J of this section, the commissioner or municipal official acting as his or her agent may provide the information in subsection 6066AF of this title to the following people without incurring liability under this section. One, an escrow agent, the owner of the property to which the adjustment applies, a town auditor, or a person hired by the town to serve as an auditor. Two, a lawyer, including a paralegal or assistant of the lawyer, an employee or agent of a financial institution, as that term is defined in 8 VSA subsection 11101. An employee or agent of a credit union, as that term is defined in 8 VSA subsection 30101. A realtor or a certified public accountant, as that term is defined in 26 VSA subsection 1312, who represents that he or she has a need for the information as it pertains to a real estate transaction or to a client or customer relationship. And three, any other person, as long as the taxpayer has filed a written consent to such disclosure with the municipality. Fee.
Can you repeat that please?
No. No, you can read it later. Fees. Anyone requesting a copy of his or her own tax bill will be granted such at no charge, either in person or via fax or email. Taxpayers may send a request with a self-addressed stamped envelope to request a copy to be mailed. Other individuals, including but not limited to financial institutions, lawyers, and accountants requesting a copy of the tax bill or history of payment shall be charged a fee of $1 per tax bill and $1 per tax year payment history requested. Documents will not be turned over until such time as the proper payment is received. Format. The treasurer will make a copy of public records, including but not limited to tax bills and histories of payments, in the following standard format. A, for any public record maintained in paper form, the treasurer will make a paper copy. B, for any public record maintained in electronic form, the treasurer will make either a paper copy or an electronic copy in the format in which the record is maintained as directed by the requister. A request for a copy in a format other than the above is non-standard. The treasurer will not provide a copy of a public record in a non-standard format. Transmission of public records. The treasurer will transmit a public record. The treasurer will charge the requister the costs associated with doing so and such charges will align with the fee section above. Request for transmission of a record will be made in writing and all charges must be paid prior to delivery of the record. Denial of a public records request. If the treasurer denies a public record request in whole or in part, the denial may be appealed to the select board chair in accordance with 1 VSA subsection 318C1. The select board chair will make a written determination on the appeal within five business days after receipt of the appeal. A decision by the select board chair may be reviewable by the Vermont Superior Court pursuant to 1 VSA subsection 319. Again, this policy is adopted, Town of Pollet today, but with the endorsement of the select board. Effective on this date until amended or repealed. Third policy is called the Town of Pollet cash receipts petty cash and return check policy. The purpose of the cash receipts policy is to establish proper management practices over cash checks and other receipts in order to instill public trust in town operations, to safeguard public funds, and to provide accurate, reliable, and timely information upon which financial decisions are made. Authorized personnel. For internal control purposes, only the following officers, employees, and volunteers are authorized to receive funds on behalf of the Town of Pollet. Treasurer, assistant treasurer, town clerk, assistant town clerk, going administrator, collector of delinquent taxes, library trustees, and librarian. Proper payee. All check or money orders shall be made payable to Town of Pollet or Pollet Public Library. No monies shall be made payable to a town officer, employee, volunteer, committee, or board. All funds remitted to the... Um, sorry, receipts. All funds remitted to the town treasurer's office shall include a detailed description of the source of funds, date of payment, and account to which it shall be applied in the cash receipt system. Tax bills are to be stamped and dated when paid in person and method of payment is to be indicated. When a taxpayer pays with cash and does not provide a tax stub, two stamped, carbon copied numbered receipt tickets shall be issued as proof of payment and must be signed by the official receiving the monies. Safeguarding funds. Safeguarding the funds prior to deposit with the treasurer is a responsibility of the authorized personnel receiving the funds. All coins, currency, checks, and money orders are to be retained in a secure location and will be deposited to the treasurer on a not less than monthly basis. Large deposits of over $500 cash shall be deposited to the treasurer on the same day or as soon as possible and shall be maintained in a secure location until such time as can be transported by the treasurer to a banking institution, which shall be no less than 48 hours after the treasurer receives the funds. Smaller cash deposits will be deposited by the treasurer once per week. Petty cash. A base petty cash amount for each relevant department shall be established by the treasurer. Petty cash must... Must be stored in a secure location such as a lock door or vault. Only authorized personnel shall have access to the petty cash location. At all times, there must be maintained a written record of the balance and receipts paid from petty cash. The total of receipts added to the cash balance in the petty cash box must at all times equal the predetermined petty cash amounts. Under no circumstances will personal funds be used to compensate shortages. All discrepancies must be brought to the attention of the treasurer immediately upon such discovery. Return to checks. A return to check will be recorded in the accounting system against the revenue in which it was originally posted if the check is not replaced. The bank has already attempted to redeposit the check prior to sending notice to the town of the return. Therefore, the... Therefore, the Treasurer will notify the check writer and inform them that their check did not clear and advise that there is a twenty-dollar return check fee. Thereafter, full payment must include the full amount due and the return check fee. If a check writer has multiple return checks in a one-year period, payment must be made in the form of cash, money order, or bank certified check. Policy is adopted by Town Paulette on this date with the endorsement of the Select Board, effective as of this date until amended or repealed. Last one. The Town of Policy, uh, the Town of Paulette Tax Collection Policy. The purpose is to establish a public policy that provides clarity regarding tax collection, interest accrual, and penalties applied, due dates and times, and proper forms of payments related to tax payments. The Proper Payee. All checks or money orders shall be made payable to the Town of Paulette. No monies shall be made payable to a town officer, employee, volunteer, committee, or board. Receipts. Tax bills are to be stamped and dated when paid in person and method of payment is to be indicated. When a taxpayer pays with cash and does not provide a tax stub to stamp, a carbon copied numbered receipt ticket shall be issued as proof of payment and must be signed by the official receiving the monies. Due Dates. Property taxes are split into two collections annually, the first generally being in September and the second generally being in February. Due Dates are clearly marked on all tax bills, which are mailed no later than thirty days before the first due date as required by thirty-two VSA subsection forty-seven seventy-two. In order for a payment to be considered timely, it must be received in the Treasurer's office by close of business on the due date. Except that the United States Postal Service postmarks on or before the due date shall be accepted, provided that payment is received in the Treasurer's office within five days of the due date. Only USPS postmarks are accepted, not metered postmarks. Waste Water User Fees are subject to the same penalties and interest as property taxes. Due Dates are clearly marked on all Waste Water User Fee Bills, which are mailed no later than thirty days before the first due date as required by thirty-two VSA subsection forty-seven seventy-two. In order for a payment to be considered timely, it must be received in the Treasurer's office by close of business on the due date, except that the United States Postal Service postmarks on or before the due date shall be accepted, provided the payment is received in the Treasurer's office within five days of the due date. Only USPS postmarks are accepted, not metered postmarks. Interest and Penalties. As has been voted on by the residents of the Town of Paulette, any late tax bills are subjected to one-point-five percent interest after the due date has passed. If taxes are not paid in full after the second due date, generally in February, they are considered delinquent and are subject to one-point-five percent interest in addition to the eight percent penalty. Payments received after the due date shall be applied to interest and penalties before being applied to the principal due. Forms of Payment. The Town of Paulette does not accept credit or debit cards or digital payments, EFT, ACH, et cetera. Cash, checks, or money orders are the only acceptable form of payment for tax collection. This policy is hereby adopted by the Treasurer of the Town of Paulette on this date with the endorsement of the Select Board, effective as of this date until amended or repealed.
Did any of you gentlemen on the Board have any questions or comments on these?
I'll make the motion. We support our Town Treasurer and her efforts.
I'll support that. I just, I do have one question now. Is there any town bylaws, either in the zoning regulations or whatever, that says otherwise? I know there was a situation where there was confusion over whether cash was acceptable for a zoning permit.
I don't know the answer to that. Um, my, my thoughts would be the half legal tender.
Would this override any other thing that might be?
This is strictly in my office, so if I receive the monies, that's where it comes from.
And you did say that if there's two bad checks, then it needs to be paid in cash?
Or money order.
Multiple, multiple bad checks.
Right.
Two or more.
Michelle?
It does say on your, um, most recent zoning permit that only, um, checks or, um, money are, are accepted. So would, I think what you were getting at is would this override that? And that needs to be really clear.
So the, these are policies in my office. They are not policies in the Town Clerk's office, they're not policies in the Assessor's office, and they're not policies in the zoning administrator's office. These are in my office. Thank you.
The Plan Commission is looking to redo that whole permit for the, uh, first line.
Okay. We can mention that Julie has these policies. Now, I'm presuming that you got guidance for these policies from somewhere?
I, um, I both looked at the BLCT model policies and I, through attending various conferences, have copies of other towns' policies and I amended them, the, from the two sources to make something that would work for us.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions?
Very good.
All favor?
Hi.
All right.
Post?
Karen. Thank you.
Thank you for putting all that effort into that, Julie. It makes everything much clearer.
Wait there. And if you need a chart time job, you can do one of those very fast readers at the end of a new commercial.
My eyes afterwards is like having a hard time focusing, not looking at words.
You did great job.
Thank you. Texter all set? You got them all signed? Do you want to look at any of these bills or checks or anything yet?
I looked at the warrants.
Okay. Bob signed the checks. Emergency Management Director? I guess you're done, right? Oh, thank you. Emergency Management Director?
We covered, um, both that and the health officers' report at the last meeting.
Okay. Waste Water? I haven't heard anything, think that there, things here seem to be going all right. You heard anything Keith or?
If you want, if it would make life easier for you, you're welcome to give whomever is providing you with reports, they can email them. My way and I'd be happy to gather them.
Okay.
Prior or, you know, I can, I can, if you have somebody's contact information, we can reach out and just ask.
I'll, I'll, I'll just send her an email when I think of it to include.
Every other week she could send me an email and just let me know what's going on.
To include you.
Or monthly or whatever you would prefer. I think that.
I think it would usually do a monthly report.
It was generally monthly.
Yeah.
But I also, I've never received them, even from Jeff, I would never receive them. But it's, I'm happy to filter through the reports.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it right into your, your bunch and then it'll be easier for you to tie them, tie them in with all the minutes and stuff, correct?
Yes. And how's that?
I think the twenty-fifth, this Friday, they're gonna have a tour down there. I did see that. Some other people are looking at systems and they want to come down and look.
So not, not a tour for the public?
No. Let me see if I can find that. I should, I should bring that up.
Is this what, what not to do or?
Yeah, that's, one of the things that she said right off the bat was the fact that that was the questions about that being, um, the small clarifiers were. Okay, this all starts with Dave Domenico from the state. Shay Mailer gave me her email, Chief Operator, West Paulette. A group from DEC is scheduling a site visit to the Paulette Waste Water Treatment Facility to see how the two RBC trains fit into the existing building. There are two other facilities that use a similar design are in the, and are in the design phase for a major upgrade. We are hoping to visit on Friday the twenty-fifth. Would that be able to show us around the site that day? We would plan to be there around ten. And she said, um, yes, the date works. Looking forward to meeting your team and showing you the, the key RBCs we have in West Paulette. There's some correspondence at the facility that I reviewed from the startup in two thousand fourteen suggests, up to a few years ago, that suggests the clarifiers were part of an upgrade are undersized in comparison to the pre-upgrade clarifiers. This may be valuable design consideration. So that's what she gave back to Dave, but Dave was, he was there right when we were swapping over and he was very interested in that one, trying to help us work through this process. So he knows it pretty well, so hopefully someone else will learn from our issues.
He may have some renewed suggestions as well.
Exactly. And maybe, maybe a process that we can, we can gain some valuable knowledge, so it can only be good. And that's the only thing I got on Waste Water. Older unfinished movement of schoolhouse monument.
So I don't know, maybe Monica will want to speak, but basically my kind of quick bit on why this is there. So this whole topic has sparked a lot of good conversation and involvement throughout town and just kind of considering different resources and looking back on, you know, historical literature about what the monument was all about. And so since Monica's here, maybe you want to speak to that email that you wrote? That was a great email.
Yes, I hear. We started working and receiving some emails, watching the rules and whatever. That monument is unique to its location. So I spoke to the electrician about that. She said, fine, but we've got to get a new one.
Did she talk a little more about it?
Oh, okay. So that monument of the old schoolhouse is unique to that, um, that site and that the expedition? The wording on the file is, there's one word on there that indicates its location is important to an expedition that was sent out through the south of Paulette. So if we moved it to the green, there is no south. So we would like to go for a reminder, so to bury mine art, as that, to put a new monument and an attached history, very important history, interesting history, that is a library in Paulette and a few other backup history right in your schoolhouse about the, um, the Paulette base and headquarters was in the town of Paulette. And if you read it, you'll see that it was, and that was very important. Those were scurritions that were sent out, expeditions around that point, but the actual fifteen-hundred to two-thousand militia in Annunah was, you know, around here in Paulette. And supplies came in here from Bennington, from Manchester, and between Washington to Washington and, you remember, they, um, put Paulette as a strategic point to cut one program and it worked. And it turned the history of the revolution off and the war was defeated. So it was not only at Bennington, but here in Paulette. And you should all write around that and we should have a monument. It's fantastic.
Okay.
So, so working, I'm working, caring on this historic, people looking together, are black probably, incidentals, it's very similar to the other. Come on, here, put the nice stuff. And, um, and have a nice ceremony here. The DAR is all for it. The state is all for it, to put it on their trail, their history trail from Ticonderoga, Ticonderoga to Mountain Independence, to Hubbard, to Paulette, to Manchester. And I think it would be wonderful for the students, the teachers, just the general public and the merchants here.
And I think it's important to add too, that in your email, it's saying that looking for the Board's support in pursuing funding and grant, grant funding.
Do funding.
So looking for grant funding.
Did you have any, like, size or design of a monument in mind? Have, have you worked on that at all or not?
No, we haven't gotten to that part. But we're, we're thinking something similar to what is there, but instead of a, just ordinary stone, some kind of square granite that matches the, the stone around the, the green, I think, you know.
Okay. Cause that would, that would be considerations from what I've seen that, you know, we don't want to have a huge big monument on the green. That's what some of the considerations I've seen from some of the people that have, uh, there's expressed opinions on that.
Well, you know what I have, um, here, you know, just for you to take a quick look at what it might look like on green, this is going a little too, too, step further, but here, and, and maybe put some trees around, but here's the, here's the plan. You have to have the tree, but one would stay here covering up the water, uh, the well pipe, and one would be here, so.
Okay.
I mean, you could keep this for a while.
I was just curious, did you, did I?
Yeah.
Show this down, please.
It would help take the wires off from Bud's overhead. It would make the town look more like.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some suggestions.
Right. We need to work, work through this with the input and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
We, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we wouldn't like to get started in dominating grants, so we'd like, um, of those.
Excuse me. Can I ask a question here? I understand you're leaving the monument where it had, where it intended to be forty-two years ago?
Right.
Okay, that's great.
We would just put in another monument indicating that this was the headquarters for, for.
Just like to point out, I live six miles from here, but I still live in the Town of Paulette. This is all in the Town of Paulette. So if the troops were here in the Town of Paulette, that location is almost dead center, this town. Did you know that?
Well, if you.
It's almost dead center.
If you read the attachments and I.
I didn't get them on my email for whatever reason, but I, I got you the bulk of your message for whatever reason, my attachment soon come through on mine. I know Deb, I know Deb has them. They are available. I think the intentions are all very good here with them having, you know, recognition in the town. I think it's all very positive. It can all be positive.
Karen, if you'd like to take a look at the, the history.
Oh, that's a culture, I believe.
I, I was looking through some of the emails that you sent out. I've, I've scanned some of the emails that, that I've looked over some of the emails.
Give some detail where the troops were approximately from East Rupert all the way up the middle and the Town of Paulette. They mentioned one of the citizens here who helped them with supplies and so forth. So that is all this.
Does anybody else have any more comments? Dolores?
Just a question. We have two villages within the town, correct?
Yeah.
West Paulette and Paulette.
That's right.
North Paulette was a designation at one point and also was spanked town. So it seems to me what Ray has said in regard to the Town of Paulette, regardless of village or anything else, is this entire area. So the monument is within the Town of Paulette already to this event, correct? Or just?
That.
Can I make a little comment here, please?
Okay. Are you, you were just making that as a comment?
That's just a comment.
Okay.
Nothing else.
What I thought about, since our last select board meeting was, I thought it'd be nice if you get somebody that knows how to draw to make a map of the town of Pollitt. And I thought about this for a couple of weeks now. You could even do place maps for the Barnes Steakhouse or the Station Restaurant, or make them as a hand up at the town hall and at the library, or even maybe at the school. Of all the places of historic value in the town of Pollitt, including cemeteries, because those are historic places, for example. Some of our cemeteries are very, very old in this town. And I just thought that if you could make some kind of a map of the historic places in the town of Pollitt, that would be my suggestion. So, that's something that maybe could be thought of. And we wouldn't have lost a lot of money. Murray could probably fill it up for you.
Okay.
I think that's a good project for the Historical Society.
Yeah. If you could work with the Historical Society, I thought it'd be a great project to do that.
It would be a nice project to have.
Anybody comes through that point, Matt Markel opens up, they could have a file of them in there, any, any public place. And people could come through town on bicycles or their car and say, "Hey, let's go look at these." So, just a thought I had.
It's, it's certainly open to a discussion about, about this. It's a, a very viable discussion, but I don't think that, at this point, we need to gather more information before we decide, you know, we want a duplicate monument down here or something like that, or, or if we need.
It's not a duplicate monument. Pollitt, you made the history that is in our law.
All right. I, I didn't choose my words correctly, but another monument in town here, so. But it's certainly something that we need to continue the discussion on. So, thank you for bringing up these points and, and moving forward with looking into other, another option like that, but it, it needs a group, I feel, not, not as the select board, but as me. It needs a group with, working with Barry Minor and the, the Historical Committee and such like that is, is a very important factor, but I don't think it's anything we can act on with this, this one meeting. So, anybody else want to weigh in on this? I agree with, with you looking into it and presenting out, but I, I think we need to gather it all with everyone in town and, and all the historical groups and such, and, and continue this process.
Yeah, it, it, it's a process, obviously, and, but if we have such a history here, it, it should be known by all the public, coming in around town and all the historical. It, it, it should have some kind of marker. It should have one. It's a very, very important part of our history. And it should be celebrated. And I know the state is having their two hundredth, the anniversary, what, five years in there, for a, to celebrate.
Right. That's why we'll, that's why I feel we should continue to work on this project. But I don't think it's anything we can decide, you know, like, right here tonight, that we want to, to, to go out and, 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 you know, have it all done. I think we need to keep gathering the information and make a well-informed decision. Eve?
I was just wondering if, if what you're saying is you want to see more of a plan?
More, I want to, I want to see a lot of community involvement in this decision, is what I want to see.
Or you want everyone?
With, with groups, you know, plan and groups and, and more feed, more input.
Or to work on developing, like, a proposal to present?
Well, that's, that's what I think we, we need to, I mean.
Something substantive, you can say, "Here it is."
This, this is what we'd like to do in the town green, you know, and get more feedback in, because we just had one little mention of it and it, and it sparked a lot of feedback and, and we brought out a whole bunch of new things that we didn't, that we didn't particularly know at that last meeting. And that's why I want to keep, keep it all going so that we can gather all the information and that's available on this subject before we make a final decision. Julie?
I was just wanting some clarity on what Monica was, was asking for, from you tonight. It seemed like, do you need, do you need their authority to pursue grants?
Yes.
Okay. So, then you're asking for a, a proposal to go before you, before you authorize her to pursue a grant? You would like the specifics of what the monument is?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of narrow, narrow it down to our, our options and stuff, you know. Marty?
Just to clarify, there, there's a whole trail of markers spreading from Ticonderoga down through Hubbardin and over to Bennington.
Uh-huh.
And the one gap in that whole campaign is what happened in, in the center of Pollitt. And the center of Pollitt is pretty well-defined in the books, ranging from East Rupert, through the Bigwax, all up and down the valley, and I imagine down toward the river road. What you've got at the north school, what makes that plaque unique, is that it references the point that defiled between Indian Hill and Ridge to the east. That was the jumping off point for the campaign. But it was not the headquarters. The headquarters and commissary and stores were right here. And this is the one place that there's no marker along the way. That's why the state would be particularly interested in fleshing out, you know, the, the gaps in that trail.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll keep this, we'll keep this going and get as much information gathering and, and continue this process, I, I think is, is appropriate. But I don't, I don't, I personally don't feel like I want to jump right this, at this particular, tonight to, to do it, so. Is there any, John, do you?
Nothing on that. I got something to bring up about the library.
Okay. Bob, do you have any? Okay.
Well, I just, I've been in town for a little over fifty years, and my grandmother actually taught at the North Pollitt School. And my father-in-law attended the North Pollitt School. And I think it's a great little school, and I think it would be a great place for people to visit. But frankly, ninety-nine percent of the people that, that could potentially visit there, it's not safe for them to visit there because there's no way to get off the road with vehicles without driving on the lawn or, or for whatever other reason, with the traffic flying by there. So, I, I like the idea of leaving the monument there because that's where it was intended to be, but I, I think a lot of other people aren't going to benefit from being able to see it. A lot of older people are not going to risk stopping there and trying to get hit, driving, pulling out of there on Route Thirty without traffic control and everything else. So, I think, I think there should be some other significant monument in town. I'm not sure whether the middle of the green is, is the place for it, but there should be something else in town where people could visit and take in all the, all the information and, and people be well-informed of what, what took place in Pollitt. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion on the monument at this point, or we'll just continue this discussion? Okay. The next meeting, so. Julie?
I have one other thing that maybe I'll put under old business, because I forgot to put it on my memo.
Yeah.
I had asked if you guys were okay with setting up a meeting with Aflac, and we did that. And there were some people who are, think are interested in making some changes. So, I just need your blessing on doing a, a change of plan date. Just changes when the plans start so that we can make amend, uh, changes now and people that want to start using the policy can start using it as opposed to waiting to July. This is just pre-tax money. It doesn't cost the town anything.
Right. It's nothing to do with the town. It's just an administrative type thing. Does anybody have any problem with that? Fine. You okay with that, John?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, I guess that's fine, just changing the date on the Aflac policy is fine with you. It's just, just, just start, stop so that everybody can get on board that was interested. Okay. I don't see anything ever motion. Just go ahead and do it. Any consensus? Okay, policy edits. What did?
So, if you remember, once upon a time, Julie and I worked on the personnel policy. And we had said, "Oh, that's so long from now," and we wanted, we had the goal of a January first adoption. So, time is now to revisit. So, we, I think, wanted to, I wanted to get your feeling for how the board wants to approach the review of the town's current personnel policy. My initial thoughts are, would you like for me and Julie, if you're interested, but primarily me, to kind of go through and focus on some policies or some sections that are a little bit more dated than others? And we can just think about those because it is a pretty, you know, robust set of policies. Primarily, the one that we were talking about was personnel with vacation, sick time, that. So, we could also just adopt that for January first and then continue to chip away at the others. But I wanted to just bring it back up. Julie reminded me of it and wanted to bring it back to you all to see how you wanted to proceed. We do have the, the vacation time one that we had, I mean, it's, it just hasn't been adopted yet.
I think that's probably the one that seems to be the biggest.
So, you guys, we, we wrote that, made changes to it, and you guys all agreed on going forward with it. But then you said, you wanted to review the entire document and adopt it as one policy after reviewing all of it. So, we only did that once.
Right. So, what I'm, what I'm seeing is that our best intentions didn't, didn't work out.
We have two months.
Yeah, to review the whole policy and, and we have a budget to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got two months to do that all.
We will begin next, yeah, or, or more meetings, two months.
So, what I'm thinking, so what I'm thinking is that maybe we should go back to, to just adopt that one policy to get the ball rolling because honestly, I don't expect it to happen, to adopt the whole policy.
Well, I would like to, before, between tonight and in two weeks from now, I would like to just take some time to go through it quickly, the policies myself, and just to see if there's anything that's glaring. For example, completely unrelated, but similar thing, the whole cattle's at large, cattle at large thing. You know, that was one of those policies that it's like, sure, we don't need to look at that until something happens, and we're wishing that we had fine-tuned. So, perhaps what I can do is for next meeting, just come to you with anything that might need some more.
To get us, to get us headed in the right direction, so to speak.
Yeah, and even if we adopt, you know, we can make this adoption with the person, you know, the vacation time, sick time, et cetera, and maybe a couple of other things, and then, you know, we can continue to fine-tune it. But it might be a benefit for us to amend a couple of things at once.
What do you feel about that?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you start however you want to break it up, but just go section by section or.
I think at the very least, we should definitely adopt with one, the policies that Julie and I had revised. Would you?
What do you, what do you think about that?
Well, I had thought earlier when we were discussing it that we break it up and chew off a little bit each time. It's thirty-seven pages long.
Right.
But we got tied up mostly in the vacation thing, which is needed more.
Right.
I, I, I think what Kristen's proposing sounds good to, to start with. And then as we see other glaring things that might open the door to other things that need review.
Okay, good. All right, it sounds like you got to go ahead, Kristen.
I'll be busy.
Excellent.
If we could get Julie to read it, we'd be done.
We're only going to be, we're only going to be funding you to go through the whole thing.
What do you, is that going to be?
Yeah. Are you going to be busy that night?
I might be a little late, yeah.
I think, I really think, because I did, I did flip through the thirty-seven pages when we were reviewing part of the original bit that we were just discussing, and I think a lot of it really is okay. There's just some that's needing a bit of.
Tuning.
Revamp.
Perfect. Good.
Okay.
Look for that at the next meeting. Excellent.
Okay.
Is there any more old or unfinished business? John?
People have contacted me, specifically Jan O'Gee, about two things. One, the concern of the steps at the, right now, that whether they are safe, whether they make it through the winter before we, we have delayed that, make a construction. And that's how I presented to the board, that concern. The second concern is, how do we funnel discussions with Ralph Nims, the architect? The library board has some questions for him. Do we want to be the conduit, or do we want Ralph to have multiple people from Pollitt contacting him? I don't know how that relationship started, so I, I want to do it the most efficiently and fair.
I would.
Whether Ralph has his meter running every time somebody from Pollitt comes.
I would, I would think we would need to talk to him and see.
Okay.
Will you reach out to him and see if?
I can do that.
If we can, but I, I think that we need to funnel it so that we can, so we can at least monitor the discussions.
Okay.
And that way, it keeps it all, so everybody is, is all in the loop.
I'm sure this isn't anything new to Ralph.
Right.
So, I'd be happy to do that and get back to the library.
Discuss with him, you know, if, how, how he, how he feels the most effective way to handle it is. But I think that we need to be at least copied on everything that's going back and forth so that we don't get blindsided by what we talked to him about, and he said we could do this, and we had no idea that that was any, even talked about.
Okay. How, how contact him?
You, got any feedback on that?
I agree.
And?
Well, we're going to be the ones held responsible for, for the money and the budget. I mean, it's kind of hard to turn someone else loose with money that we have to answer for, I guess.
Right. We would have to make the ultimate decision anyways, but if we're involved in the daily, in the conversations, then we'll.
I mean, I can look at it again, but I don't feel that they're a, a complete safety hazard. We could put a sign, you know, "Watch your step" and, or whatever, but there's much worse.
Right, but just, just.
Everyone's house in town probably has worse steps than, that's what steps of the library.
But we just need to make sure that we're, that we're not, you know.
No, that we're, we're planning, we plan to do something, but I don't think this time of year is the time to do something with them.
You have an insurance policy which would cover any injuries probably. And if you're really concerned, the insurance company sometimes has people who will take a look at them and advise you with whether or not they would be dangerous or not. And that's one of the things insurance companies do.
Who's willing to go there?
I don't think so.
Maybe.
I don't think so, but I don't think they should.
Okay, thank you. Any other old or unfinished business?
I have some new business.
Okay, new business then?
So, Comcast, this is for those far and wide who have Comcast. They have provided the town of Pollitt with a telephone number to reach their northeast operations center in the event of network-related issues with Comcast. in the event of network-related issues with Comcast services or infrastructure. It's a 1-800 number, which I will be including in the minutes, so.
Good job.
Tonight's meeting sponsored by Comcast. Not really, sorry.
Sorry.
Sponsored by Aflac. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any new business? Public comment?
On Saturday, from 10 to noon, the library is having their annual Halloween parade. And we'll start at the library and then we'll parade up and down school street and light refreshments will be served in the library afterwards. And the public is encouraged to attend in costume and you can bring a car or a little mini float of some sort to join in on the fun.
Cool.
And our office will be open for the parade.
Nice.
Stay tuned. You may receive some municipal officials in costume.
You could be able to film this, Jay.
We will have you open for visitors.
See if Jay can film this for us, that'll be good.
Saturday, the day is the 25th?
The 26th.
26th.
Starting at 10.
10 a.m.
Frank?
For anyone interested, it's been on news, the State's coming to do a simulation of a Katrina-type event. And if anybody wants to follow along with that type of thing, it'd be interesting. The only point of interest of the Paulit would be that if the Mendon Ridge got seven inches more main, approximately, through Katrina than we did, if we got that here, it would have been a much, much worse story all the way down the way through Grandville to Paulit, the whole area. So it'd be interesting to see what they do do with this simulation, if they consider emergency.
And Bob is going to have a simulation tomorrow night, right, Jay? At the school tomorrow night, you guys are going to do a disaster simulation?
Oh, yeah.
Right. From open up the, does.
Yeah, it's only a simulation, there won't be any effect on the public.
Right.
Mainly it'll be communications study.
Okay.
That will run from about 4:30 until 7:00.
Okay.
As well as the fire chiefs keep and the emergency operation people.
Okay.
Is this open to the public? Is this open to the public?
There's not really anything to see.
Okay.
It's called cat before, cat is thrown.
Okay, that's what it's about.
For exercise.
I just, you know, don't want to put somebody in the minutes and get people.
Basically radio checks. Bob and Jay will at the operations center communicate with the state.
Cool.
And the fire chiefs and myself will be on the radio. So if you hear any radio chatter or it sounds like there's a flood at the end of River Road or Bull Bridge, it's probably not active. I think Bob put something in the town newsletter and it wasn't Gibson play out that it should have a cap, but it's a simulation, it's not, it's a, they do them every two years, so.
Okay, excellent. Any other comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming tonight.